Good afternoon, welcome to the April 12th meeting of the Planning Commission. And we will now call it to order at 6:01 PM. Madam Secretary, would you please call roll for determination of quorum?
Commissioner Vrooman.
Here.
Commissioner Wojcik.
Here.
Commissioner Harland.
Here.
Vice Chair Fisher.
Here.
Chair Lapaglia.
Here.
Let the record reflect, all members are here.
Thank you. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Chair Fisher.
You can all put your hand over your heart and we'll say the flag of the United States. So, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Madam Secretary, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Seeing none.
Thank you, and I'd like to call for a motion in a second to approve tonight's agenda.
Make a motion to approve?
Hold on a second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Madam Secretary, please do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Vrooman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wojcik.
Aye.
Commissioner Harland.
Aye.
Vice Chair Fisher.
Aye.
Chair Lapaglia.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to public comment. At this time, we will take public comments. Any person may address the Planning Commission on any subject pertaining to city business, which does not relate to any items listed on tonight's agenda. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the Planning Commission on any matter not listed on the agenda. Speakers would be limited to three minutes. And Madam Secretary, do we have any non-agenda public comment tonight?
Seeing none.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our workshop. Let's see here. The presentation tonight is Multi-Family Design Guidelines Workshop Number Two. And with that, staff, may we please have the staff report?
Thank you, Chair Lapaglia, Commissioners. So, tonight's item, it's the, our second workshop on the Multi-Family Design Guidelines item that we've been working on for about a year. Previous workshop was in June of 2022, so it's been a while. We've done a lot of work since then, and so we'll walk through that. With me here tonight, to my left, so I'm Carl Steele, I'm the interim city planner. We have Alan Loomis with Placeworks here tonight, and we also have Molly Mendoza with Placeworks here tonight with us. So, with that, we'll get going here. So, this is, uh, this is what the document looks like. We just put this out on, on, uh, public review, so this kind of kicks off our public review. This is what's in your, your packet, the design guideline, Objective Design Standards is what we're calling them. So, tonight, the agenda, we'll do a bit of a refresher on Objective Design Standards. We've got, you know, Commissioners who weren't here at the previous workshops, so just a bit of a refresher there. We'll talk a bit about the community input. We did a community survey, so we have some results there. We'll dive into the draft document that we've put together that we're putting out on public review. Talk a little bit about the implementation. I wanted to talk about the process that projects will go through, and then we'll have time for questions and comments. And we can open it up to members of the public if, if folks are here and would like to speak as well. So, a little bit of a refresher on Objective Design Standards. So, this, this project is an implementation measure from our new housing element that's yet to be approved by HCD, but it is in there as an implementation measure. The way we got going on this project is we went and got a LEAP grant. It's a local early action grant from HCD, uh, which is funding that HCD provided to cities and counties across the state about three years ago to do, um, things like this. Updates to your codes. In this case, we're doing objective standards, which help us, um, with dealing with some of the new state laws, and some of those are listed here. You have SB 35, there's a mandate under SB 35 for us to review certain projects. That's another one of the, the laws the states put in place, um, that we have to review a project with objective standards. We can't have any discretion if someone comes in with an SB 35 project, and we have to have a simple process for that to, to go through. We also have to have a sort of a minimum standard of quality with the design guideline, Objective Standards, and we'll talk about that. And they're not always a one-size-fits-all approach. So, the applicability of these, um, Objective Design Standards, they're, they'll be implemented primarily within the downtown specific plan, the transit-oriented development overlay zone, the multi-family zones, and then potentially in some of the commercial and, and business and innovation areas. And we'll talk about that. We have maps we can show you, um, where, where the, this will apply. So, there's also, as we talked about, SB 35 on the previous slide, there's potential for, for someone to come in with an SB 35 project. And right now, we don't have any objective standards, other than what's in the development code to hold them to. And, uh, we, we actually had a SB 35 project come in in a neighboring city, uh, recently. So, they are coming this way. And it's good to know that if we get these guidelines in place, we'll have something, uh, to review a project like that against. There's no discretion allowed with those projects. We have to approve them ministerially, so they wouldn't come to the commission. So, uh, it's good to have the Objective Design Standards in place. And there's, there's other requirements listed here on the slide, that they can't be within certain hazard areas. But, uh, there was one that came in in Temecula in the last year that was processed at the city in Temecula. So, they, we are seeing those projects, and the state is looking at making more tweaks to SB 35 in the legislative process too. So, uh, they might make it easier for people to do those projects. So, it's good to have the Objective Standards. Another one, another bill, I think we've talked about this with the commission before, maybe they made some of you aware of it, and some of us heard about this at the recent Commissioners Academy, is SB 2011. That one was passed by the state last year. It goes into effect in July, and it allows affordable housing and commercial innovation and office zones in our city. Potentially, people could come in, propose a affordable housing project, and there's, there's no requirement for discretionary permit. So, if we put these Objective Design Standards in place, we'll have something to review those projects against. If we don't, then we don't, we don't have something to review them against. So, it's helpful for us to do it for a number of reasons. So, this is the larger map. I do have blowups of this later on in the, in the presentation, but this kind of shows in general where it applies. So, let's see if I can get the mouse to work. Perfect. So, um, if you just take it from the center, central core of the city, um, you know, you're looking at the downtown specific plan, the TODs outlined in red, that's where we're seeing the vast majority of projects right now that, that are multi-family, so we'll likely continue to see a lot of projects in there. The green is all the commercial. You can see, we have a lot, lot of commercial. And as of July, uh, with that new state law, SB 2011, people will be able to do, propose multi-family affordable projects in there. And then you can see the yellows, the innovation, they could also propose it in there. And these, we have some other commercial areas. So, worth noting, um, that these would apply in a lot of places. So, we're trying to think of how to have different standards that we can get a diff, a, a number of different types of projects. With that, I'll turn it over to Molly to talk about the community survey.
Thanks, Carl. Yeah, so let's talk about some community input. So, um, we wanted to make sure that the community was engaged during this process. And so, back in November, we launched a survey. That survey was available online from November to February of this year. We advertised that using social media, using the city's newsletter, um, and then with flyers with QR codes that were posted here at City Hall, and I think a couple other places. So, we wanted the survey to be both educational, as Objective Design Standards is maybe not, you know, common knowledge or common information. So, we did provide some background on this project. Basically, what are Objective Design Standards? Why is the city developing these standards? And then why are they implementing these standards? As well as what are the overall goals? So, that was all outlined in the survey and on the webpage. That's still accessible too now. Someone wanted to go back and look at that, even though the survey is closed, that information is still there. And then we also gathered feedback on three primary topics. So, architecture and design, open space and mobility, and then we gathered some demographic information just to understand who was participating in this survey. And because, uh, we did not require everyone to respond to every single, you know, question, we garnered 56 responses for architecture and design, which was really great. That was kind of the focus of the survey. Thirty-four responses for the open space and mobility, and then 29 regarding demographic information. So, we're going to walk through just a kind of high-level summary of the feedback that we received. And I will note that there is a, um, more detailed summary that I think was provided in the staff report?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, and that's also available online? Yeah?
Yes, it'll be on the project webpage as well.
These, these results, this is, this is obviously specifically Marietta?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, correct. The survey was, um, advertised by the city for this project, right?
For this design element project?
For, for design, the Objective Design Standards, right?
Okay.
Right.
Yeah. So, um, the, the first portion, the architecture preference, uh, what we wanted to do was understand people's preference for different design styles, and then where they might like to see those styles. And so, um, what we found really was that people were mostly interested in the Spanish craftsmen and American mercantile style, as well as the farmhouse style. People were less interested in seeing the Tuscan and the modern styles throughout the city. Some just felt that it didn't really fit with, you know, the context of Marietta, historical context, or otherwise. One thing to note is that the American mercantile style people did feel was most appropriate in the downtown area. And in general, comments were that they felt the, the Spanish and the craftsman style felt, um, you know, really consistent with styles that already exist in the city, with the historical context of the city, and just more, more visually pleasing. And, uh, the Tuscan and modern, they just felt that there was less interest because it didn't really fit in the city of Marietta, and they didn't, weren't really interested in seeing more of it. We decided to keep all six styles in the document. However, the information that we received, it informed where these styles are permitted throughout the city and in the different zones. We also asked questions about open space. So, we wanted to know what was most important to participants, um, in the community regarding open space and landscaping. As you can see, people are very interested in the provision of open space with, uh, the development of, uh, housing and with residential, uh, a focus on trees. People just want to see more trees throughout the city. People are also really interested in more public or shared open spaces, uh, even more so than they're interested in private open space. So, you know, an interest in parks or places to commune was, um, very enticing to participants. And then the greenways and green space. So, um, as a part of development, they'd like to see more greenways and green space attached to that. And then lastly, we asked people about their mobility preferences. And then, so this is another one. People's responses really did tie into the last question. There was a focus on nature's, uh, nature trails and horse trails, as well as pedestrian walkways and bike lanes and, and bike paths. So, people are really interested in variety of mobility options, being able to walk from their home to places of retail or places of interest, um, and then just the general focus on the open space with the nature trails and the horse trails. And then lastly, our demographics question. We wanted to know how people related to the city of Marietta, because, um, you know, obviously, you know, your relation to the city is really going to, uh, gauge your answers. It's going to probably push you in one direction or the other. Most people that took the survey were homeowners or lived in the city. So, you can see that there's a variety of responses here. We had business sold, business owners, we had renters, we had, um, property owners, people who noted that they lived there their whole life, so have a, you know, a vested interest in the city of Marietta. So, we got a, a lot of great feedback from this, and it was great to understand kind of who was participating in this. And this is not the end of our community input. Uh, as we move forward, we're hoping to do another pop-up workshop to really let the community know that there is a draft document that's available for them to review, to take a look at, and to give us a little bit of extra feedback throughout this process. And now I'm going to pass it over to Alan. He's going to talk through the draft document.
All right. Thank you, and good evening, Commissioners. So, I know, I recognize, um, a number of you from when I was here back in June, I guess it was. I was feeling like it was about a year ago. And so, we've been working, uh, since then on preparing this draft document with the information from the survey and a lot of dialogue with your city staff, um, not just Carl, but actually, uh, the entire city staff. We had a workshop a couple of months ago, in which I think there was maybe one city planner left working to counter. Everybody else was in a conference room, reviewing our work and giving us their best thinking. So, um, we've had a really good process, and there's a number of, um, components to the draft document that reflect both that process, the research that we did prior to in, uh, getting started on writing any sort of standards, and some of the dialogue that, uh, I had with you back in June. So, I think what I'll do is the entire document, if you printed it out, um, it's 150 pages, including a pretty extensive checklist we'll speak to. So, we're not going to go through all 150 pages tonight, um, so spare you that. This is, as was noted, really kind of the public unveiling of the document, and it's in kind of a public review for input from you, from community members, from developers, architects, other interested parties. And so, it's just, at this point, we're interested in hearing feedback. Specific feedback you might have tonight, we'll take into account. Otherwise, we'll just give you a kind of broad overview of how to navigate your way through what's a good deal of material. So, as you can see, the, the document is organized into five, uh, distinct chapters, with, as I mentioned, a pretty extensive checklist as the last chapter. We open with a general purpose statement, um, and that explains the context that Carl outlined at the beginning of the presentation. Like, why are we doing this? What is the Objective Design Standards? Where does it apply? Uh, and the meat of the, the document from a design standard standpoint is chapters two, three, and four. And so, they're pretty, they, they cover different kind of topics, uh, um. And I think one way to sort of think about this is that, in, in a certain way, they are, they're geared towards, uh, a somewhat linear process of designing a buil, a building or a development project. And that is to say, the first thing that you're likely to start with is you got to lay out a site plan and figure out like how big your buildings are and where they're going to be positioned on the site. So, that's, those kind of issues are generally covered under chapter two, the general standards. Then you might move into, what is the scale of those buildings? And how tall are they? And like, what does that mean in terms of their massing? That's generally going to be, those kind of questions are generally covered under chapter three. And then this question of architectural styles is addressed in chapter four. Um, so that's kind of the broad overview of how to sort of navigate the big picture topics. So, chapter two, these general standards, as I said, covers a good deal of information related to site planning and landscape and the open space issues. So, like, if that's your interest, that's where you're, you're going to dive into chapter two. We go into quite a bit of detail on parking, for example. Um, and we've actually split parking out into three different kinds of parking. So, on the one hand, you have surface parking lots. You have a garden-style apartment surrounded by surface parking lots. What are the standards about designing a parking lot? Like, how frequently should you have trees and all that kind of stuff? That is a different kind of problem, a design problem, if you will, from a development where everybody has their own parking, they have their own garage. And you see a lot of those kind of developments. It's your two-story townhome that's kind of tucked under, or built over a tuck-under garage. And so, there's a lot of garage doors in those kind of developments. So, we address that kind of condition. And then there is something you haven't really seen yet in the city, but is a possibility under the zoning code, which is that you could have structured parking. And that, and that means like, you've got some sort of, you know, concrete parking structure that housing wraps around or sits above, like, that's a possibility in the city. So, we're addressing that kind of scenario too. Under the, the site planning and open space, we address kind of the idea that there should be, you know, a centralized open space, and what are the parameters for that? What are some of the kind of design standards associated with amenities, um, and those kinds of features? And we drill down into some other really kind of, um, generalized standards, like you see here on, the, the last bullet is doorbells. We understand from your city staff that sometimes people propose multi-family developments, and not every unit gets a doorbell. So, how are you supposed to, like, knock on the door or kind of, you know, tell somebody you're visiting that you actually arrived? And that's because developers, when they get down to the wire, they decide they can save a few bucks by taking out a doorbell everywhere. So, at the request of city staff, we have a standard that says every unit should have a doorbell or a ring device, or, you know, something along those lines, so you can knock on the door. So, we drill down into some pretty, like, specific details under the general standards. But these would apply to any kind of project that's proposed, um, multi-family mixed-use project proposed in the city. There's some really key ideas in site planning that relate to architectural style. I think I'll come back to them after we talk about style. Chapter three, we organize, um, basically by building type or building heights. And so, in this case, we understand that, you know, the vast majority of development that's occurring presently in, in Marietta, and is likely to occur in the future, is basically going to be a three-story, uh, building or less. So, you've got a great deal of, you know, apartment, garden apartments that are three stories. The bottom graphic here is illustrating that, um, townhome development, where it's really a two-story townhome that's built over a garage. And then it has a small front, you know, front door that's attached on the ones, on the side opposite of the garage doors. But that's a three-story building, and you see a lot of that kind of development. But according to your code and what you allow, for example, in the downtown and the TOD districts, you do have the possibility that somebody could build, you know, buildings that are taller than that. And the critical kind of cutoff point is really going to be about seven stories. And as it happens, your code is particularly in the TOD overlay zone, allows for buildings over seven stories. Now, it's pretty unlikely that we're going to see that kind of development in Marietta in the near future, but it is a possibility. And the reason that seven stories is a kind of critical cutoff in our mind is that once you go over seven stories, you're really entering into an arena where you have to have concrete or steel construction. You can't build it in wood framing anymore. And that kind of changes the dynamic of architecturally what's possible. So, we address this high-rise condition because it is a, you know, it is a possibility in the city. And then the mid-rise, uh, building type between four and six stories, you do have some four-story examples and, um, in the city and some that you've recently approved. So, you are seeing that kind of higher, you know, four dense, four stories, if you want to call it higher density. And there are places in the city where you can build up to six stories. And so, we address this middle zone too. So, basically, under the, uh, chapter three of building types, we kind of break it into these three sort of buckets, different kind of building heights. And so, if you were a developer or an architect, and you know that from the get-go, you're going to do a three-story townhome, you only need to read one section of chapter three. The, the section that deals with anything over four stories, like, you don't need to look at it all. It doesn't apply to you. So, we try to make it a little bit both developer-friendly and staff-friendly, that we sort of split it out in that fashion. And then lastly, we dive into the question of architectural styles. And so, as Molly had mentioned, we, we put out this kind of survey about architectural styles and kind of the community's preferences. And, you know, as mentioned, you know, there are various, various different opinions about what seems to be appropriate in the city. And, you know, we think we ought to keep all these styles on the table, although they're somewhat nuanced as to where they can go. So, for example, already in the downtown specific plan, there is a, there's a statement that says any new buildings in the downtown specific plan should be one of those first three styles. Now, the downtown specific plan doesn't give you a lot to tell you what is meant by those styles. So, this is where, in this case, our document, because we detail those styles, can come into play. The other three styles we've sort of introduced to be applied into other, um, parts of the city. You can also see that we've kind of calibrated some of these styles. So, we're saying that there's a limit. You know, some styles are only appropriate at certain scales. So, for example, the, um, the craftsman style or the farmhouse style really, you know, they kind of look really silly if you start building in that, like, six stories. Imagine a six-story craftsman building. It would just look out of place and out of character with that architectural style. It really wants to be at three stories at the max. So, we said that's a max of three stories. And we do have a little bit of a clause that says, well, if only a portion of your building is four stories, you could make a craftsman building that is 25% four stories, but the rest has to be three stories. And the recent Adams project is a really good example of how that can work and look very attractive. So, we've kind of calibrated these styles based on height. You can see that the modern style, there's no limit on height, because frankly, if you end up in a, a scenario where you're building a concrete-frame, high-rise construction, that probably wants to be a modern building. You can imagine that would look really silly if you're trying to clad a, you know, a 10-story building and, uh, with concrete construction or steel construction, and trying to pass it off as a Spanish Revival building. It would look pretty ridiculous. So, you know, if, if there is ever a possibility, or somebody does propose a, a high-rise building in Marietta, they're going to end up, number one, in the TOD zone, and number two, they'd be employing the modern style. But generally, for the majority of the city, any of these styles will apply for the vast majority of the kinds of, um, development scale that the city's likely to see. So, what I'll do is I'll kind of give you an overview of what is meant by these stylistic terms. Uh, and then I'm going to dive into kind of how we detail out what the styles, the standards are for these individual architectural styles by using the craftsman style as an example. We'll also talk about kind of how these are nuanced, that not every style is allowed everywhere exactly in the city. So, the Spanish colonial revival style, I think, is pretty well-known to anybody in California. You know, you think of any of the missions, the, you know, the magnificent courthouse in Santa Barbara, or frankly, anything in Santa Barbara of this style. The photographic example here is a building in Santa Barbara. It's a very robust style. It's got a lot of possibilities for decorative details and kind of architectural embellishments. You know, it's like, but it's, it's one that we're very familiar with. The key thing we've kind of looked at in writing the standards here is to make sure that if somebody is employing this style, they are adding on to the building a decent amount of decorative details, because this is a kind of architectural style that developers like to do, where they just do a very banal white box with some clay towel roof, and then they say, oh, it's a Spanish colonial revival building. And most of us would look at that and go, well, no, no, it's, it's a little bit too reduced. It's, you need more. And so, we have a kind of requirements for that more as part of our definition of this style. The craftsman style is very popular here in, in Marietta. You know, the, the city hall that we're sitting in is a kind of modern interpretation of the craftsman style. And we think for residential buildings, that it should be more pure to the craftsman style. But this is definitely one that was, like, very positively received. And as I mentioned, the Adams project that you reviewed recently is, is of this style. So, it's one that fits in pretty well to the city. You have a decent number of existing projects, um, that are well-regarded by the city staff, and I, I believe the commission as well, that are in that style. The American mercantile style is one that, um, you know, when you say it, it raises a lot of eyebrows of what is meant by that. And as you can see in the illustrations, it's the basic kind of brick main street building that you would see anywhere and all over the United States. This style is permitted in your, is currently called out in the downtown specific plan, and it's in the kind of historic core of the downtown. You've got some examples of this. So, it's an appropriate style in the downtown. And, and like I said, already kind of called out for the downtown. So, we've provided the, the standards for how this style should be detailed. The Tuscan style is one that does fit into this particular context in most of California. It's, you know, think of, you know, Tuscany, Italy, the hills, you know, wine country in Italy. So, it's maybe a little bit more rural in its kind of orientation than the Spanish Revival style. It has a lot of similarities with the Spanish Revival style. One of the kind of distinguishing features of, that separates them is that the Tuscan style often has a lot of stonework, whereas the Spanish Revival generally doesn't. So, you might see like a kind of stone tower element or something on a Tuscan-style building. But it is a distinct and different style, in our opinion. As mentioned, we did allow the modern style. There is some examples of this in the region. Admittedly, not the most popular style in Marietta, and so, we're saying this should be an option, but one that should be limited to the TOD zone, because that is the zone where you're likely to see higher-density development. And as I mentioned, the possibility that you could get a high-rise building that exceeds, you know, seven stories. And this, as I mentioned, kind of the only appropriate style once you get into certain heights. And so, we do have a modern style defined. And what's interesting is when you dive into the kind of specific details that are allowed here, modern style, like, I think architects are prone to thinking like, this is the most versatile of the styles. I can do the most different possibilities and be the most creative with a modern style. And in, and certain respects, that's true. But in other ways, because the modern architecture style is already so reductive and minimalist, means that when you get down to a question of like decorative details, what you need to have, or the possibilities you have, you have like five possible decorative details in a modern style, whereas the Spanish Revival, you have like over a dozen possibilities. So, in fact, the modern style isn't as open-ended and creative as I think a lot of architects might, um, think or entertain. And then there's the farmhouse style. And the farmhouse style is one that's actually very popular in the region. I think the city, uh, staff has shown us a number of recent applications that are employing this kind of modernist, kind of abstracted farmhouse style. Some, some developers have called it like farm chic. And, uh, but it's definitely one that's being, uh, very attractive here in the region. We've been doing work in Temecula and, and Wildamar and Menifee, and we see lots of this application. We hear from developers, it's very popular with home buyers right now. And so, I think it remains to be seen whether this is just kind of a, a purchasing trend in the current homeowner buyer's market, or whether this is going to have a kind of long-term staying power. But in any event, we do provide standards for the farmhouse style, um, because as I mentioned, it's, it's a very popular style. And I think one that, you know, kind of matches the, um, the ethos of the region of being a kind of agricultural-based kind of, uh, landscape. So, as I mentioned, we don't allow these styles everywhere in the city. And so, this was a feedback we actually received when I was here in June, last June, from the, from the commission. There was some discussion that the commission had sort of suggested that you didn't want to see everything be a one-size-fits-all. You didn't want the entire city to be completely homogeneous and all made up of the same things. So, we kind of ended up sort of thinking carefully through like, what were the allowable height limits in the different zoning districts where the standards would be applied? And what And what was kind of contextually appropriate? What would give developers a certain measure of flexibility? And so then we end up saying that, kind of following the, the trend or the kind of precedent that was already established by the downtown specific plan that laid out, there are three styles that you're allowed to choose from if you're in the downtown specific plan. We said, that makes sense. Let's apply that to the other zones. So you can see the multifamily zones, you know, there's a mixture of different styles that are allowed in the multifamily zones. The TOD zone is a different mix of those styles. And then you have, as Carl mentioned, the commercial and office and the innovation zones, and that's a different mix. So the, the intent here is that as developers are applying this, there's a kind of limitation on where things are going to go. So that American mercantile style, which can go up to about a, you know, that can be up to a six-story building, that's appropriate in the downtown and the TOD district, but nowhere else. It's not going to be a style that you would build in the multifamily zones. The modern style, only in the TOD zone, and we're suggesting in the commercial zones, but nowhere else. The multifamily zones, it's the more traditional residential architectural styles that are permitted in the multifamily zone. So we're trying to calibrate this so that as the city builds out under these standards, you're not going to get kind of like a cookie cutter of the same kind of developments being applied everywhere. The other key thing we said with the architectural styles, and this comes up at the very beginning of the site planning chapter, section in chapter two, is that once developments reach a certain scale, and we, we picked the threshold as over 15 buildings, you have to apply more than one architectural style as defined off of this list and as appropriate. So if I'm in a multifamily zone, number one, for example, and my development has 20 individual residential buildings, it's 20 individual townhomes, I have to pick at least two of those architectural styles and apply them to. So there's a diversity within the individual project, not just from neighborhood to neighborhood, but within the projects. And that threshold goes up, like once, we're suggesting, once you go over 30 buildings, then you have to employ three styles. And 30 buildings is a pretty significant, you know, collection of, it's a pretty big project. And that the, the 15-building number works pretty well with some of the developments that you've already seen, like across the street, buildings, projects that are already built, that have been favorably reviewed by staff and their estimation are around that 15-building threshold. So we think that's a, like, that's a good number to say, like, you can do all that in one architectural style. But once you cross that threshold, you need to employ more than one style. We're also saying that you need to mix color schemes, have distinct color schemes. So if you're a 14-building development, you still, may still have to have two distinct color schemes. So you can't just sort of have a bunch, all the same white buildings. You gotta mix the color schemes. So we're trying to ensure a certain level of architectural diversity. Like I said, both at the neighborhood level and with the individual projects. So this is the zoom-in map of the areas where the, the styles apply. And I, you know, we can come back to this as part of the discussion. But you can see, we've tried to identify what are the appropriate styles based on the colors of the different zones. So we can come back to these maps and you can sort of think about looking at specific intersections and think like, what's the possibilities of what could be designed for these different tracts of land and within the different kind of zones that are illustrated with the different colors, including the central part of the city. So as Carl previously mentioned, this, the red dashed outline is the TOD overlay zone. You know, where you, where the current zoning allows kind of for the greatest, or the kind of most dense projects within the city. So as I mentioned, I'll go through a kind of example of how we kind of define these styles by using the craftsman style as an example. And we're only going to do the craftsman because the structure for all of the styles is exactly the same. And now we go through the same pages of standards. So we, we address issues of form enassing because each of the styles is a little bit different when you think about the form enassing of these styles. So there's a list here, in this case, five particular requirements that a craftsman-style building will have to comply with all of these requirements. We address the issues of roofs. So this has like, as you can see initially, like roof pitches. It deals with the issue of kind of minimum dimensions for eaves and kind of materials for the roof. So for example, Bullet D here speaks about using wood or an asphalt shingle or kind of a composition. Or kind of a artificial imitation of those kinds of materials is the appropriate roofing material on a craftsman-style building. If you look at the Spanish revival style for, as an alternative, it will say you have to use a Spanish clay tile roof or a cement tile roof that's colored red. You know, this, you know, Spanish revival, if you don't get the roof right, you kind of missed the whole boat, you know? So we deal with those kinds of topics. We address materials and colors. And so kind of what's the appropriate kind of finishes on these different styles? We talk about doors and windows. So you could see Bullet number one, we speak about window operations. So traditional craftsman buildings, if they're, they're built in the twenties, they're going to have casement windows. So we're saying a new development needs to kind of be in line with that. It doesn't have to be, every window doesn't have to be craftsman, but, or casement, but at least 50% in this case. We speak about trim, if that's appropriate to the style under these topics. And then lastly, we address the issue of decorative details. And so each one of the architectural styles has a menu of decorative details that can be applied. And this is really intended to be a men, a menu. And the way we've tried to structure is to say that, you know, projects that are relatively small only have to provide a certain number, in this case, four of this, four of the decorative details off of this list. So there's some degree of choice by architects and developers how they're going to apply this. But buildings that get to be fairly large or have more than, you know, multiple buildings in a, in a single application or development proposal, they have to pick more. So again, trying to encourage a little bit of diversity. Larger buildings can just accommodate more of these decorative details and they should, and they should have a little bit more going on. So that's kind of how we're trying to address this issue. And like I said, if you look at the modern style in contrast, there's a lot fewer options because the style is already so minimalist. So all of six of the architectural styles go through the same sequence. And they're all a little bit nuanced based on the characteristics of that specific style. And so with that, I'll turn it over. Oh, do you want to turn it over for checklist? Or I'll do the checklist and, yeah, I'll finish the checklist. So the last piece that we did, that's chapter five, is a checklist. And so what we did in this case with the checklist is we went through every one of the style or kind of standards that are in the, in the previous four chapters of the document. And we converted it into a checklist. And you can see that we've got two sequences, two pairs of columns, one that an applicant can kind of fill out. And so it hopefully puts applicants on notice that they're responsible for every item in this document because they've got to look at through this and they've got to determine, does this apply to them? Because not every standard's going to apply in every project. And have they met this? And if it does, if it does apply to them, have they met the standard? And so in a way, we're sort of asking for applicants to sort of self-certify their projects. But you'd see there's another pair of columns for the city to, staff to do their own evaluation. And so this is the sort of Reagan-Gorbachev trust but verify scenario, right? So we're not saying applicants get to self-certify in the way they go. Staff still has an opportunity and an obligation to use the checklist to kind of also do their own evaluation. And then you can see each page has opportunities for both the applicant and the staff to make some notes. And we think, you know, honestly, this is kind of an important component to have this because particularly for projects that are going to be 100% ministerial review, they're not going to be heard by the planning commission or any other public body where there's going to be a tape to record how this project was approved. It's important that this checklist be completed and be part of the project record so that, you know, five years, four years from now, when that project's being built or it's finished and somebody says, how the heck did that get approved? Carl and his colleagues can kind of pull up the document and they can run through the checklist and say, well, this project did in fact need all the design standards that were in effect at that time when the project was approved. And we've got a record that we did a thorough evaluation of it. And so this is, this is a piece that probably like sort of exists behind the scenes as part of how this document is actually being implemented. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Carl.
Great, thanks, Alan. So just a couple more things here and then we can, we can get into a bit of discussion. So Alan kind of teed that up, getting through the document and the checklist at the end. As the commission saw, you know, there's, there's 50 pages of checklist in there. There's a lot of different ways of someone could do a project. So we have to have a number of different checklists. And we're going for, I would say, somewhat robust checklist. But to give you just an, I just want to give you an overview of, of the process we're envisioning. So this flow chart, the flow chart that you see on the right, that's in our current process guide. And a typical, a typical multifamily project would probably be in this level three in, in the process guide right now. So the typical process we would see today with the projects we've been processing, someone would come in, they'd submit for a pre-application, right? That's a 30-day review. Staff would review the pre-application. There's requirements we have to review it a certain way under SB 330. And so that we would get some comments back to the applicant. Hopefully that, and, and the pre-application, lots of departments look at that. It's not just planning. You've got fire, you've got engineering, building, they're all looking at it as well and providing comments. And the pre-application's required under state law. So folks do the pre-application, we get them comments. They should redesign based on the comments they get back from the pre-application. Then they submit their formal development plan application, which is a discretionary application. So we go through, review the development plan, that gets routed to all the same departments again. It's a discretionary review process. We go through cycle reviews. You can see examples of that here on the, in the flow chart of, on the, the blue, you see the cycle reviews. But at the same time, we're also preparing a SEQA document. Could be a number of different types of SEQA documents. Could be an exemption, could be a mitigated negative declaration, could be an EIR if it's a huge project. So this, the SEQA process is also going on at the same time. And then we come, kind of all that comes together. We do the public review of these documents and we come to a decision. Some, some multifamily projects are approved by the director and don't come to the planning commission. There are projects we've approved in the last couple of years. There's a, there's one that's going to be under construction here on Los Alamos soon that did not come to the planning commission. But some do come for a, a public hearing because maybe the neighbors ask for a hearing. It could also be required by the SEQA document because someone has to certify the SEQA document. The staff can't just certify it if it's like an EIR. So there's different reasons why we might have a public hearing. And then after that, it goes through plan check at the counter. Say, let's say it gets approved. After that, it goes through plan check with building and fire landscaping grading at the counter. And that's kind of where final engineering takes place, all that kind of stuff. So the new process, to give you just an idea of, of how this would work, the new process, if, if someone's coming in and they're doing a ministerial checklist review, they're still going to have to do a pre-application that's required by state law. And at that time, we would, staff's envisioning, we would look at sort of the SEQA, sort of initial review of SEQA, I'm calling it sort of a SEQA consideration, if we think the project can be exempt from SEQA. And this may be, you may, it may be an SB 35 project, like we talked about earlier, or maybe one of these new AB, or sorry, SB 2011 projects. So they do a pre-app. We already know that they're going to be exempt. So they're just going to do the ministerial checklist review, right? So then if, if they're doing the ministerial checklist review, that's the next thing they submit. And that only comes in through planning. That's not going to go through all the other departments. And there's, it's exempt from SEQA. If it's not exempt, it's still going to do the development plan process that you have back here. So it's still going to do this process. But if it is exempt, it essentially goes through this ministerial process review. And this is where applicants will save a lot of time. From, from a time process standpoint, we don't anticipate that there'll be a lot of reviews, especially the applicants that are savvy enough, as Alan was talking about. If they've done these projects before, they can follow the checklist. They should be able to come up with a good project and, and meet the checklist. Maybe we only have to review it once or twice and then, and then it gets approved. And then it goes to plan check with building, fire landscaping at the counter. But there would be no review of a public SEQA document, there'd be no public hearing. So that just gives you kind of a snapshot of how the objective design standards would work. And that is, that kind of wraps up to where the commission can open it up for questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll bring it to the commission for questions. Commissioner Wojcik, do you have any initial questions for staff?
I do, but can you come back to me?
Sure.
Okay.
Commissioner Reiman.
I do. One of the criteria that, that I noticed that you had on there where we can't build is a very high fire hazard zone. So I'm wondering how that is determined and by who is that? Is that already included on our, have we already determined those areas?
Yeah, so the very high fire severity zones are determined by the state. It's the state fire board. And yeah, that, that, you can still, you can still exempt some projects in very high fire severity zones, but that can be an issue at times. But it's still possible to exempt a project under SEQA in a very high fire severity zone. We have done it in the city. It's not a showstopper. On that SB 35 process, Commissioner Reiman, it is, it's a showstopper only on those specific types of projects, an SB 35 project. But if it's not an SB 35 project and they're still trying to use the guidelines and they're in a high fire severity zone, they, they may still be able to get an exemption.
And then ultimately, that would be determined by the state or by our local fire department that would say that they could get a waiver? How, how does that work?
With the zone? Um, it, it's kind of depends on, it's, it's, it's pretty complicated. We don't have our fire staff with us here tonight. Adrienne is really, really good at this. But I guess to simplify it, if people meet the setbacks that fire is asking for, so like maybe a hundred-foot setback for the, they have these flame-length setbacks that we get in the high-fire areas, say they, say they meet that, right? Or say they're adjacent to projects that have already been developed, maybe. So there's no wildfire, even though they're in the high-fire zone, they could be surrounded by projects that are already developed. So they don't have wildfire hazard areas directly adjacent to them where there's vegetation. Then they may be, be able to be exempted that way by virtue of sort of being surrounded by developed land. And we have, I think, I'm pretty sure we've approved some projects recently with that, where we've done an infill exemption, even though they're in the high-fire zone, there's no vegetation around them. So we, we can do that.
Where they may argue saying, hey, well, if I put something here, it's not a fire zone anymore. Is that, is that an argument?
Well, if there's veg, well.
But if there's no vegetation and.
If there's no vegetation.
I'm putting a development in, so that's going to decrease the fact that it's no longer in a fire zone. Is that a?
No, it's still in the high fire. So the, we, we can't affect the zone. I guess I should be clear on that. The high-fire severity zone is what the state says it is.
Got it.
We don't have control over where that is. The state is also planning on updating it at some point. They just haven't done it recently. But yeah, we can't change where it is. And a lot of the city is in the high-fire severity zone. It's just the way it is.
Mr. Chairman, can I just clarify to what Carl was saying? So the, the state maps are being updated currently. And we think we'll see the local maps from Marietta, at least the first draft sometime in June. The state does account for development that happens over time. But the cycles between the fire map updates are, they tend to be pretty lengthy. So if we get development on a piece of property that's in a fire hazard zone, we won't see how that's affected or how the fire map revisions will be affected for another five or six years sometimes.
Okay, so we'll get some of it before the actual new law, 2011 takes effect, but, but it's an ongoing process.
It is an ongoing process, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Another question I had, I saw the different zones as far as commercial, innovative, you know, and all the different districts that you had there. How much of it, and, and I can tell just by looking at it, because I know obviously what's in, in town, how much just generally is actually already developed? I mean, it's not all, you know, to be developed. There's probably a good portion of it that's already spoken for. And there's structures, buildings, those type of things like that. So how much of those zones are we really talking about? You know, 40%, 50%? Or how much of it is, is still open and available for development?
I think quite a bit. I don't know that I can put a percent on it. We could walk through this a little bit. I mean, we, I think we have the time to kind of walk through it. I mean, I'd start, so CarMax is here, you've got Walmart. So a lot of this is already built, but there, there are, this is Hot Springs coming down into Jefferson right here. These are vacant sites right now that are in the TOD, they're commercial. And then you get outside the TOD, you know, you come over here, you got Lowe's and, and Kohl's. But this stretch along Calmia, you've got, you know, old homes and along Jefferson too that were, those were zoned residential. And then in the, the general plan update in 2011, or well, I, actually I should back up. They, they, a lot of these were mixed-use, the old mixed-use zone, and then changed to commercial in the, in the general plan update, I believe in 2011. So this green, you've got, there's, a lot of those are just single-family home sites.
Right.
And we have received a lot of interest. There's been a number of, of developers that have looked at maybe putting in a project in here. So there's quite a bit there, I would say. But most of the other green spots you'll see here and the, and then the regional commercial that's in the purple is, is developed except for the triangle, obviously. I think people know that. But most of the other ones are built with, you know, the Albertsons, the Target, you know, the movie theater. So I. The Albertsons, the Target, you know, the movie theater, so I think, I would say to the commission. I would say if you're looking around and you see, you know, adjacent commercial areas that just have homes, like a single family home on it, then yeah, that is a site that's ripe for potential development like this, yeah.
Yeah, I just was curious on the general perspective, I'm sure, you know, maybe the city's economic development said, hey, we have X amount of. Land used available for these purposes here, but of course, it could be, you know, taken by some of these, by some of these projects, and hey, we're gonna put in a multifamily, so. It just, just out of curiosity, if you if you happen to know.
Right, yeah, I mean, to clarify, right, with the new law, like the new SB twenty eleven, right, people could propose an affordable project in here, and. We don't have any guidelines right now that really tell them, you know, once we adopt these, we would have something that tells them, we want the project to look like this, right? It's in these these objective standards, but right now, we don't have anything to point them to.
Commissioner Rehman, if I may, on on this topic, where that is zoned, community commercial, looking over here, it's a, it's either modern or farmhouse. Is that up to the city's discretion, what design it has to be, or could the developer choose modern over farmhouse?
It, they would have a choice, and I could let Alan chime in here, but we could, we could look at that if we wanna clarify, we only want. You know, modern in certain areas, I I think that's where you're going, Chair Le Paglia probably.
Right, cuz over in that area, I know exactly what you're talking about, but you know, modern would look terrible there, I can't imagine anyone would want that, so. Was just wondering if that was the city's option or the developer's option?
I think we could look at that and maybe let Alan talk.
Yeah, I think I think I'd leave out the option, because we do have this clause that after you get to a certain development scale in terms of number of buildings, we want you to mix styles, so it's not totally homogeneous. But I think one of the advantages of saying there are some options on the style choice here. Is that it does give, I think it does give staff like a little bit of leverage. For staff as they're reviewing an application and say, yes, we know you have a choice between modern and farmhouse, but at this particular location, farmhouse would be the appropriate choice. They wouldn't necessarily be able to say under their current draft to say it must be farmhouse, but they have, they're able to start having that dialogue, whereas if we said. Everything had to be farmhouse, then that would be, you know, people come in, they propose farmhouse, and they'd be done whether that was the right choice or not.
Could that, could that be its own zone, that particular or specific area?
Yeah, Chair Le Paglia, I was kind of thinking while we're having this conversation, we could, we could say, you know, something to the effect that adjacent to the downtown specific plan, you could. Use one of the downtown specific plan styles, right, I think Alan and I had talked about this, so so in these areas that are. Adjacent to the downtown specific plan, you could, you could also try to utilize one of the downtown styles, right, because we might end up with. A downtown style building, obviously across the street, right?
Right.
So then that kind of makes some sense to have that adjacency, we could look at doing something like that and put that in the in the the standards.
Okay, yeah, I think that'd be great.
Pretty fair idea.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just add, you know, I think the west side, I think what we dealt with with the apartment project on Adams there, having, I I don't know that it's really. People really wanna see modern on the west side of 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 the fifteen period, I I don't think it's a very popular town, and your survey.
I agree with that entirely.
Yeah, and your survey shows that Tuscan and and modern were, you know, very low, that they wanted, that they did not want that, I think it was modern and.
Yeah, modern and modern and Tuscan scored kind of the the least favorable.
Yeah, I think those on the west side, especially the modern, would not be conducive.
Well, I think I think we could probably look at some language that says, you know, west of I fifteen, if you're in these commercial zones, here's the mix of styles, and east of the I fifteen. Here's the other styles, it seems like that's a pretty clear, unambiguous line.
I think we could look at that, the only thing I would caution is the the TOD, like Alan said, does allow a really high potential. So if someone's doing, maybe we we would need to say over a certain height, you know, is okay, but otherwise, no.
Yeah, cuz I remember that kind of being like the the clause of it, is anything over six stories or seven stories, you know, would look silly with some of. Of the particular designs like, you know, like Craftsman, I think was your example, which which I agree. At the same time, if if a seven story development came in on those empty lots, which could potentially be right there off Jefferson on each corner of Mirada Hot Springs, you know, I still. Agree with Commissioner Rehman that, you know, modern would not fit this whole side of this whole rural side of, you know, the town at all.
Well, I would, so I would just, Chair Le Paglia, I would mention that we do have an approved, you know, the commission approved, I believe it's an eight story hotel. Here in the innovation, the AG Katings Hotel, it's called the Hotel Marietta, I believe, so and it's a modern style. It's eight stories next to the freeway.
I thought that was off the the two fifteen in Lenell.
No, it's, it's basically right here where the arrow is.
Okay.
Yeah, so we we've approved essentially a very large modern building, west of the fifteen, so I would just caution, I think we could. We could look at maybe some language, you know, where it's a certain distance off the freeway, maybe something to that effect, and not in the TOD, we could look at that.
Well, if I may, I think the conversation seems to be kind of focused on the commercial office innovation. Properties, and given that that's, we're including those because of the new state law that allows for. Residential or mixed use development in those commercial zones that comes into effect on July one of this year. I think we could be a little bit more nuanced, right now you can see that's just a big grab back bucket, all this stuff gets this, right? And I think we could probably take another look at that list and be a little bit more nuanced about which zone, so maybe the innovation zone is modern. Maybe not all the commercial zones, so we kind of tailor that mix a little bit more carefully, in a way that we've already done for the downtown and the other multifamily zones.
Yeah, I think we could look at that, following public review, yeah.
Cool, that'd be great.
Just a few more questions, Alan, I think you had mentioned, or or Molly, about the survey responses, and there was, you know, I saw fifty six or some of the numbers out there, was that the. Total number of responses or just the ones related to design standards?
That was just related to the architectural styles, so then for the open space mobility, we had somewhere around like thirty five, and then the demographic portion was a little bit less than that.
How how many, how many people responded to the survey in whole, and and I'm just kind of wondering. Just with the population of the size of the city, was that a, was that a good result, or average, or in your experience with other, putting a similar survey out with other cities?
Yeah, that's a good question, so the fifty six would be the most, I I would say, responses overall, so we don't know how many people visited the site, that's not something that we could track. So it could be more than that, but the fifty six was the highest number of responses that we received. And then as as far as, you know, the quantity in in regards to the size of the city, you know, obviously, it's not scientific, it's it's not. Grabbing everyone's attention, and you can't make everyone interested in objective design standards, but we did feel that it was a fairly good response as far as how long we had the survey open and how it was advertised. You know, moving forward, that is something to consider for, you know, maybe a second smaller survey that we're gonna do on the public draft. And then, you know, relative to other surveys that we've done in the city, I I worked with Carl in the housing element, and. That was fairly consistent for some of the other, you know, participation efforts that we, you know, put out for different projects.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna mention that too, Molly, yeah, that we had a similar outreach effort on the on the housing element two years ago, and. Yeah, I mean, it can be kind of hard to get people to take the survey, even though it sounds good to people like us, commissioners and staff. It's not as exciting, I think, for a lot of people, we tried to make it as interesting as we could, but you can see, like, some people kind of dropped off as they took the survey too, they just responded to the styles, and then they didn't wanna do the rest of it, so. So, but as Molly said, we are looking at other ways to get input on the project, we'll we'll do more during public review. We've gone to the development advisory group as well, and and put it in front of them, we've talked to them about it last year, we just talked to them about it again before coming here a couple of weeks ago. So we're trying to get input from the development community as well, cuz I know they have interest in this, so we're trying to hear all the voices, I would also mention. I mean, you guys have probably heard me say it now too, as as we've started to hear projects, and I'm talking to, you know, residents as they come to hearings, I'm talking to them about the guidelines, and. And we've had public meetings in the last two weeks, we've had public meetings in the community on certain projects, and I'm talking about the design guidelines with our community as well, and. Trying to get input, feedback that way, and then funneling that back to to Alan and Molly here to work on the project.
It seems like a pretty good representative sample, the the end result doesn't surprise me, it might not be like a content validity type of scientific, but. It doesn't surprise me, especially with the, some of the more popular designs versus the ones that are least popular, it it kind of.
Yeah, and and, yeah, from conversations with staff, that was kind of the suspect response that we would receive, so it did seem in line with. How staff felt that the community would respond, but yeah, it was a good response, and it did inform kind of the decisions that we made in creating the document.
Good, and then just one, one more comment and a question, I think just overall, I think, you know, in the city, as we see some of these multifamily housing projects come online. You know, you have some of the ones that are renter based versus some of the ones that are are, let's say condominiums and townhomes that are more owner based, right? And so if we have an overabundance of, let's say, renter based, and then we have, we have our our single, single family homes and things like that. The, in my mind, if this is what the state is really pushing the multifamily, it seems like the condos, the townhomes are are. More that bridge to go from, okay, first you rent an apartment, maybe you buy a townhome or condo, and then you get into a home, it might be a several step process before what you can afford, right? So back to the design standards here, is there, is there anything in any of these designs that we that you've kind of presented here that makes. That goal of maybe homeownership, if you will, the the condos, the townhome, more advantageous versus versus not?
Well, the the standards are completely neutral and silent on the issue of ownership versus rental.
Right, right, I get that, but is there any of those standards that maybe, and where I'm going with this is. Any of the design standards, garages, carports, those type of things like that, was that incorporated into any of the. Into into the designs or the requirements that would say, okay, hey, look. You know, the design standards have designed for the garages, you mentioned some other different features, but. To where say, okay, hey, we're gonna build this project with garages versus not, or or what have you?
Well, to to your, to your point, my impression and kind of experience has been that this three story townhome development, it's the, you know, principally two. Two floors of living over a garage and like a home office on the first floor, that that's a very popular model for, that's aimed at ownership. Because, you know, you basically might have two party walls, maybe only one if you're at the end unit, shared with your neighbors. You know, if you're, the bathroom in your third floor starts to leak, it, you know, damages your car and not your neighbor's car, if you're in an apartment complex. And so, and it's also relatively cost effective for developers to build and then put onto the market, and then they they don't have. The holding and kind of operations costs that they would with a rental property. I think there's nothing really specific in the guidelines standards that we've prepared. That would say like favor that kind of development per se, we address those kinds of conditions. Because what we see is that's a very popular development type in the region. Just the nature of land and density and costs, like, you know, that's, I think, why you're not seeing, you know, the four story mixed use buildings of restructured parking, it's like the cost. Of what I can rent those units relative to my construction costs, it doesn't make a lot of sense in the region right now. You know, Old Town Temecula maybe a little bit, we started to see that only just now. But the rest of the region, you know, you go up the road to Menifee, it's, they're just churning out that three story product as fast as they can, it seems, and and that's, you know, they're a hot ownership market too. So I think you're you're in a position regionally where I think that's just the nature of what developers are gonna wanna build more so than other things.
It might be a topic for another day or something like that, but is there some type of development code, incentives, if you will, that would encourage more of. Exactly what we're talking about, maybe that, if we're gonna do three story where you have a garage and it's a homeownership versus more apartments?
We, well, so I would add a couple, couple of items, one is we have a couple of projects in process in the city, one's in the downtown specific plan, and one is very close to it. Where people are proposing essentially what is single family neighborhood with homes that are either very close to each other or up against each other. But it's a single family neighborhood, and then they have accessory dwelling units in in them or behind them. Which is a really interesting development style we've not seen in this region, and that's, that's kind of coming online, that's a lower density than this, that's that's lower than. That's less than ten units per acre, both those projects, so it's not, it doesn't really rise to the multifamily level, but that's kind of sort of in vogue with the with the single family. So there is that, I would also add, changing gears a little bit, the housing element does have programs to help with new homeownership, and that is something, I know that we've had. The NARAP folks come to the city council and talk about how they wanna have more Hispanic homeownership in the region, cuz that's really important to them, it's something they've talked to our council about. I've met with those folks, and we we crafted some policies in the housing element, Molly also worked on our housing element, we we did craft some policies to help with first time homeownership. So we're looking to to help that way with the housing element and and our housing authority, which I also manage in in helping that way, so. We will look to do that when folks bring these types of projects that are homeownership, the city will will reach out and and look to help with that. Unfortunately, most of what we're seeing though, on this multifamily side is rental, and we, and like Alan said, we can't really force people. To to do ownership, they, you know, applicants come in and that's what they're proposing, so.
Yeah, I just was looking to see if there was some other way, you know, probably not design standards, if you will, right, but, you know, more code, I know it's a topic for another day. But back to this, the like carports, okay, we, you 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 put together all the like craftsmen for the the actual living structure, right, but. But if they have a carport, or is there anything in the guidelines here that would require it to match, or rather than just having a. Just a structure there that. Are those addressed anywhere?
The short answer is it should be yes, if you're building a carport and your adjoining building is craftsmen, we should have a requirement that says that. The flip through to find a specific clause there, and if it's missing, we'll have it.
Okay, and then the last thing is solar panels. I know some of these design standards, you know, are conducive, you know, with the different type of, you mentioned the roof pitches and things like that. And obviously, that's good, right, having the solar panels and offsetting electricity, especially in the home homeowners, but is there anything in there that. You know, they could just load the roofs with panels, or is there something that that we would put in there saying, hey, look, well, we we would encourage maybe. Maybe it to be a little bit more obscured, or without taking away the efficiency of it, is there anything that addresses. The placement of that in any of these design standards?
Off, right off the top, Commissioner Rehman, I'm thinking that, I'm not really sure we can do that with state law, I think, I think there's been. A number of laws on on the state saying that solar is basically allowed everywhere, and it's ministerial, and we essentially have to process the permits in one day now too, it's something the state mandated. So I don't, I don't think we have a lot of authority to do that, to require solar to be obscured on the roofs, and then the state's also mandating so much solar now with each unit. That folks need to have the flexibility to get the the panels, you know, on south facing roofs, right, for them to be efficient as well, I don't know.
Yeah, I was gonna say, my understanding is that we really can't regulate the design of solar panels or kind of where they're placed.
You know, as I look at that top right picture right there, you know, I could imagine, if you will, if there's solar panels on some of those. Some of those roofs that you're trying to get that 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 an architectural look there, and then imagine putting a solar, it would just takes away from it, so. It may not be practical, they may say, Adam, we're not gonna do that, but if there's something that, you know, says, hey, we'd encourage you not to put them on the, you know. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, you you raised a good point here, because I was gonna say kind of flippantly that Elon Musk is, you know, now marketing a kind of a tile, a.
Yes, solar tiles as opposed to panels.
Yeah, and it's intended to look just like, you know, composition shingle roof. I was gonna say that kind of flippantly, but then I was thinking, you know, we probably need to say under this clause D here that, you know, that those kinds of applications are permitted. You know, maybe even encouraged, because you can achieve the solar goals, and it would look just like that image on the right, potentially.
Yeah, it it would be better, rather than loading it up with panels, but if you had tiles, you know, roof tiles that were of solar efficiency. That would look a lot better than, and maybe be more conducive, right?
Right, we could add something, Commissioner Rehman, I think we could add something like encourage panels to be flush with the roof where possible, but I don't know that we'll be able to go more than that. But we could, we could probably look at something like that.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, that's.
Great, that great input.
Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Harlem? Commissioner Harland, questions for staff?
Thank you. The staff, Alan and Molly, impressive work here. The specific, specifics and details are fantastic. The, for me and looking, looking this over and reading through all the particulars, kind of the aha that I had was Mr. Bruman touched on it. City has 113,000 plus population, 14,000 followers on Facebook, 2,484 on Twitter, 7,980 on Instagram. And we got 56 responses in three months. That just seems really low to me.
You know, speaking of that, would it be possible, like, you know, like on Instagram, how you can put up like a poll? And like you can vote on the poll on Instagram? Have you guys seen that? I'm sure, I'm sure Molly has.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got, I don't know. How, how the Instagram for the city?
You give like choices and then like, you know, you can select choices. I know that's, that's thinking a little outside the box, but could we, you know, to your point, how many? Fourteen thousand followers?
And I looked it up today and, and, you know, I'm not trying to throw shade on Alan and Molly at all here and, or anybody in the room, but I think for, for David, this, this is kind of the opportunity knocking moment to where we've seen folks come in here over the, I know during my tenure that have made comments like, well, I didn't know, or I didn't see, or they're, they're not being communicated. We're not reaching them as far as some of this various communication. So maybe, I don't know if there was a targeted goal upfront when we put this out there. And if so, did we hit it? Did we miss what, what the expectations were? But I think this is something to take back. I don't know whether it's the mayor, whether it's Kim or who would be involved, but I see this as an opportunity knocking to really, how do we get the public more involved, right? I see this as an inclusion opportunity. It's an opportunity to generate excitement. This is a big deal, right? And there's some really cool stuff coming out of this that's going to make the city. I mean, we're talking about going from better to best here is, is kind of my lens, right? And that's, you've got excitement, pride, a selling story, right? To really differentiate us from others. So, you know, how do we come together as a city and really look at, how do we get the word out? What, what does it take? I, I went through the city of Marietta's Twitter page all the way back to, when did it start in November? I went back to October. I couldn't see anything on this. So maybe it wasn't put on there, but I just, again, I just see this as an opportunity that I think we can do better. Because, and, and to that point, right? And the slides were fantastic, especially the graphs, right? If you want to pull up one of those circle graphs. I kind of put my accountant CFO hat on. When you look at some of those, right? And you take the percentages out and you plug in the numbers and the people, right? So if I take my usual optimistic lens glass off and I wear my glass half-empty lens, if I'm looking at Mission Spanish, my rough mash shows 28 liking, 17 do not, and 10 no preference. So if I combine those two, I got a one-person difference, right? And kind of ditto with craftsmen's like a two? So maybe for our attorney, using a sample size this small for decision-making, does that open us up to any potential questions or opportunities down the road? I, I don't know.
No, can't force participation.
Yeah, but I totally see what you're saying and, and I agree. You know, I think, I feel like it's always confusing for people. I mean, I, I can, I can safely say that before I joined the planning commission, like, you know, it's, it's, if you're not really into it, like you were saying, right? Like for staff and for the commission, like this is exciting for us. But I think, I think the public would be excited because I feel like they tend to complain if something isn't built the way they wished it was built, right? Or like designed the way they wished it was designed. And this is the opportunity and it's good, it's cool to hear. And, you know, we've got a great Instagram page with Marietta PD, which is like super fun and funny. And the city does a good job too. So I don't know, I might circle back to asking like, could we do like a, like a, like a poll next time? And like, you know, like what does the city of Marietta residents want to see and kind of throw out some options? And it basically gives you like the instant results, you know? It's like a yes or no, or, you know, I'm sure you guys have seen that before. Right, yeah. Chair La Paglia, we were thinking about doing something somewhat simple, simplified. We were having similar thoughts while it's on public review, something people could just do on their phone. Yeah, because it's like the convenience, right? Like even though you post it or you put it on a story, it's like you still have to go into the website. You have to click around and, you know, after three or four clicks, you know, if you can't find it, you lose interest in it. We think that's probably what happened. It was in the city's newsletter more than once. I coordinated with the city's public information officer. It was on our social media. Like we said, you know, I, I think it's similar to what you just said, like people got to click on something and they got to go into it and people just don't want to do that. So we, we have kind of thought about doing something, just something relatively simple people can do on their phone to get a little bit more input. But this is, I would say from staff standpoint, it, it came in a little lower than I was hoping. And we did keep, keep trying to get the word out and we had it out in the lobby as well. I, I talked to people in the lobby and said, oh, please take it. And, and people just didn't take it. But, you know, the housing element input was a similar timeframe and we got about 100 responses, I think. I want to say 150. So yeah, if, if we can get that with the, maybe with the phone poll, you know, maybe that will give you a little more cover. But in general, I would say, you know, we're still getting input from members of the public. A couple of things I would say is, the city is mostly single-family. So you, most of the residents are single-family residents. The, the multifamily doesn't get them excited, to be honest, unless it's near them, is my experience. I've had a lot of discussions with people recently on this. If the, if the projects aren't near them, they don't really seem to pay attention. So.
And then it's built and it's modern and then everyone complains.
Then they get upset. But so, so I would just say, we're, we're a different
That's why we have a checklist.
Right.
That's how it works.
We're a different city than like, you know, cities in Orange County. Molly and I have both worked in Orange County before. I know some of you folks have business interests in Orange County. You know, some of those cities, totally different ballgame. You know, there's a lot of multifamily around. Maybe people would be more interested. We're in a relatively mostly single-family area here in southwest Riverside County. So if, if it's not in people's single-family areas that, you know, I generally find people disassociate themselves with whatever it is. They're like, ah, that's, that's a different part of town. I don't live in that part of town. So just caution there. But yes, I would agree with the commission. We could get some more input and we're happy to do that during public review. And Molly was going to say something.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add too, I think now that we do have this public draft that's available and a lot more imagery and something that people can look at and be excited about, I think it will be a lot easier to gather feedback. So when you bring something to the community that people can hold and see, it's more tangible to them, it's more palatable. Then they have things to say and they have ideas that they want to give you. When we initially started, we wanted to get like a sense of what the community felt. And so, you know, we don't have a lot of imagery. We don't have a lot of Marietta context to provide them because we haven't built anything for Marietta yet. So I think going into the second round of bringing it back to the community, showing them like, you had the opportunity to participate, but now we actually have a document here. What do you think of this? You know, I think people will be a lot more inclined to respond to that. But that is a good point and I agree. You know, there's definitely opportunities and we can use different avenues to get more feedback from people that live in Marietta.
No, I, I appreciate that. You know, and I agree, you know, you can't force someone to do something. But on the other hand, if they don't know, they don't know, right? And I, I just think, you know, the, the whole premise of, I guess, bringing this up is, I think if we just take maybe a different lens of what can we do? Right? Because I think what we've been doing is kind of missing the mark in a few cases. So again, how do we take a better city to best? And I think finding some unique ways to communicate with people and bring them on board, I think truly makes, makes everything, everything better. Just one last piece on the streetlights that you showed. Is there anything? Number of lights per street, distance per light, same side or alternate? And reason, I didn't see that in the specifics. And the reason I'm bringing that up in, in my neighborhood, I have a block area there with no streetlight. Is there anything particular in here to where? Or is that covered under something else?
Well, the sta, the standards that we wrote towards exterior lighting are really geared towards lighting on an individual property. So if it's street lighting that's in the public right of way, that would be the responsibility of the city. Or, you know, some other agency were not addressing that. This is the standards that a private developer would have to build to. Now that being said, you do have a decent number of private developments where they're building private streets that probably deserve, you know, some sort of street lighting. So we can revisit that chapter to make sure we're addressing those kinds of issues appropriately and comprehensively.
Right. I would say we can have objective standards within the private development space, but in the public space, that's engineering and public works and that won't be covered by this. It would have to be only within the private space.
Nice touch with the doorbell inclusion. That's a Carl's puppy, I think.
I would, yeah. Jared's not here tonight, but I think I can speak to Jared and I just shaking our heads when a number of projects have been approved and the, and then they're sold by what we call a flipper developer. And then, you know, some of these larger developers come in to the city and submit new plans and there's no doorbells. I'm, we're always just, why, why would you take that out? Like you're, we, we want people to be able to communicate, right? And say they're there. And there's a lot of great modern things, as Alan mentioned. You can do a ring doorbell. There's, there's other ways. Call boxes, things like that. And they, they value engineer that out. It's just mind-boggling. So that's a staff thing we wanted in there from the start.
Nice work, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wojcik, any questions for staff?
Yeah. Yes, I would like to, first, I like this. It, it's kind of a, it's a document that will help manage expectations. So if you're a developer, you kind of know what, what's before you. If you're the city, you say this is what we have. So I, I do like that and I really appreciate the efforts. I do want to echo Commissioner Harland's sentiment on the number or lack of respondents to the survey. And I don't know, but for me personally, what motivates me is food. I don't know if you could partner with a, a business in town that says if you complete the survey, maybe they get a coupon or something for, for a discount for food. That may motivate some people. So food for thought, pun intended. And maybe we'll get higher numbers. Um, doorbells, just a question. Can, can you actually mandate or require in the development plan to have everybody install the ring doorbell?
It's an, it's an objective standard that, that we would say they need to have a doorbell of a kind.
But you can't specify, we want, for, for safety reasons, if, then you have essentially cameras that if you have 100 years, you know, 100 cameras.
We, we don't have to mandate that, Commissioner Wojcik, but, right, but we, we want to have some kind of way for people to communicate that they're there at the door. That's essentially what we're saying on multifamily projects, not they go up and pound on the door. Like, we think it's nice to, keeping with a nicer development, people should have a way to say, hey, I'm here. You know, whether it's a call box or a doorbell, I think people would have flexibility.
Okay. How about, we talked about, well, maybe it wasn't mentioned, gates. If we had for access for the general public to some of these places, can we mandate gate, uh, gates, including gates for parking?
Yeah, I think Alan and I can take a shot at that. I don't, I don't know that it, it makes it tough to mandate gates on all projects. Because there are, there are projects, I would caution on a few fronts. One, affordable projects can use the incentive or concession waiver and get out of doing the gate straight out. That, that would be relatively easy for someone to do. It's also not always a, a one-size-fits-all approach with gates on projects. There are projects we have in the city, projects that, like in the downtown, where a gate really wouldn't work well on a small lot. If you, if you were telling somebody, the, the, the future projects we envision, like in the downtown and some of the infill lots, it can be very small sites. And people will still be able to do quite a nice project, you know, like the American Mercantile style on Washington with mixed use and a number of units. And it'd be really difficult to do some kind of a gate on a really small site. So I would caution the one-size-fits-all approach to gates, but then I'll let Alan chime in.
Yeah, I want to say, in terms of requiring gates, I wanted to kind of double-check that the municipal code doesn't have anything. Because one of the things we're trying to be really careful of is that we're not duplicating or conflicting with municipal, municipal code when we wrote this. But that being said, we could certainly include standards that speak to the design of gates, should gates be provided? And kind of like the placement of them, you know, like one of, one of the criteria that you often see is that, you know, the gate has to be placed in far enough back away from the sidewalk that somebody who's waiting for the gate to open is a blocking the sidewalk or, you know, having the tail of their car hanging out in the travel lane of the street and causing traffic issues. So we could look at kind of providing those kinds of standards. And I, I think, you know, maybe we could revisit the discussion on structured parking because for certain kinds of structured parking or scale of parking garages, should that ever happen? You know, those are the kinds of developments where you often would want to have a gate.
Yeah, I guess what I'm looking for, maybe mandating it, but they can petition staff for an exception. You talked about small lots or something to say, it's not feasible in this, in this situation.
That's the, so Commissioner Wojcik, that's kind of the problem. This, these are objective standards, right? So it's, we either have to say exactly what it is or it's not, there's not discretion for staff to say, well, maybe we can't, it's got to be objective. So someone would have to know the particular type of project they're bringing in has to have a gate or doesn't, right? Uh, it would have to be really clear, right? Uh, staff wouldn't be able to choose.
Right. That, that's why my preference would be to mandate it.
Understood, understood.
Then it's across the board.
Understood.
And if you can't do the project, because you can't do a gate, you can't, or if you can't put the gate in, you can't do the project. But.
I will remind the commission as well that there are a feasibility rule that will trump our standards. So we can't create standards that would render a project infeasible.
The, the other question I had is, you talked about mid-rise structures, four to six stories, I think, would normally be concrete structure? Is that accurate or am I misstating that?
It, it might have a mix of concrete. It depends on how parking is managed or kind of designed. So what you see like on the coastal cities is you'll see four-story, five-story, six-story buildings that have a concrete structure. They're often going underground. You know, one or two levels and then floor number one is all concrete and then it's wood frame above. And that construction technique at, at the moment in the current building codes really caps off at about seven, six stories. There's some flexibility to exceed that, but generally that's like, you can't build that construction type can't exceed six stories as a general rule. So once you exceed your seven stories or more, you have to be in a totally different kind of construction, kind of regime of concrete, all concrete frame, all steel frame in order to get that height. That's the kind of critical difference. But you could see a four-story building that is all wood frame with surface parking. And you've got examples of that that you've reviewed and are being proposed in town. So four stories doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be concrete construction, but that's a possibility.
We, we do have, Commissioner Wojcik, we do have a project in process, recently reviewed in the TOD that's, it's similar to what Alan was just talking about. It's the, but the first floor is basically like a concrete parking. It's all parking first floor and then it's four stories of like wood frame construction above that. So like a five-story total, but the first floor is basically just like a concrete parking garage essentially open. And then you've got the four stories of, of wood frame construction above that.
So when we do the wood frame construction though, could, what, is it possible you have wood frame, but the floor is concrete? For each level?
You might have some sort of lightweight concrete applied on top of the wood structure just for kind of stability and kind of soundproofing, fireproofing between floors. But it wouldn't be concrete columns.
Right. And that's, that's kind of my thought though, is if you have concrete floors, you're doing a couple of things. Lessening the likelihood of a devastating fire. And secondly, we've all been in those buildings where if you have a neighbor above you, you know exactly where they are in their unit because you can hear them walking everywhere. So it would eliminate that. So I was just wondering if that's some, like a design standard we can add? Where it would be concrete floors?
I wouldn't, it's not something we would add under these kind of design standards because that's really going to get triggered through the building code. And, because you have to remember that all of this is also working in tandem with building codes and the fire codes and the electrical codes and, you know. I started my career in architecture and on some level I'm happy not to be in architecture anymore because, you know, the stack of codes you have to be complying with is about this tall. And it's, you know, keeping it all straight is probably like a real challenge to design something that's attractive and meets this extensive list of regulations. So if it's something that, like in that case, that's probably better addressed through the building code, I think you just let the building code address it.
It may be something staff wants to consider in the building code.
We can, we can let the building official know.
Yeah.
That's the commission's preference.
I think there was a slide that talked about the facade dimensions. I, I don't know what, if, which slide it was, but I guess my question is, the I, I don't know what, if, um, which slide it was, but I guess my question is, the um, as I look at, at the particular examples you provided us with, yeah, asymmetrical facade elevation. So I think what you're meaning is kind of that three dimensional look on the facades?
Well, in this case, it means that if you were to draw the facade out in two dimensions, that the pattern of the building would be asymmetrical, so you couldn't draw a line of symmetry at any point down the building. And then it's mirrored on either side of that line, the craftsman style is a little more um casual. In that sense, it's not so rigid and formal.
What I like about the particular um slide you have in front of us is you look at the facades and, and it's all, I guess, three dimensional, you got some that sticks out further, others. And recently we had a project that looked like a prison, uh, because it was all flat. It was just like someone dropped a box in the middle of, of the neighborhood. And I want to avoid that, I, I, I would hate for somebody to come in and say, oh, we're gonna go, um, well, I mean, choose your style farmhouse or whatever. But it has the farmhouse look, but it's just a box. So I don't know if there's something in the design standards that we, we can create that would make it more.
Yeah, we've got that in there.
Yeah, we tried to capture that under the building types. So uh depending on the, the scale of the building and the building type, then there's kind of the standards for kind of the in and out play of the facade that you're talking about is captured in there. And that would apply regardless of whether you're doing a modern style or a craftsman style. You'd still have to have that interplay back and forth for any of the architectural styles that's tailored to the scale of the building in terms of its height.
Right, I would say that might be alarming to some developers who might be watching this, that, yeah, we, these standards will not really allow that just box design. There, there's a lot of variation that's going to be required now, um, that wasn't so easy to apply before and hence we had developers who just proposed, like you said, sort of the box. So we're, we're definitely trying to address that.
Okay, appreciate that. Mixed styles, like on the same block, I guess the question I have is I know there's some mention about you don't want, I guess, conceptually, the look of maybe three farmhouse projects in a row. And then maybe the, the craftsman project, you want, or four farmhouses in a row, then you throw in a craftsman. I think you want some, some mixture in there. And are there, uh, how do you go about reviewing that? Is there going to be percentages saying, once you hit a certain percent, then you do have to change? And does that go from building to building or just within the same confined of, of the builder for a particular building?
So yeah, Alan and I can address that, it's, it's really more about each individual site. And, and so if, if a site has a certain number of buildings, then there's more variation required within the site. But we're not, we're not looking at it from a site to site, like project to project, we're looking at it within each project. So we have, for example, right now, we have a couple of projects that are eight hundred units and, you know, you're talking about dozens of buildings. In those types of projects, the, using these objective standards, they would need a number of different architectural styles within there to create variation. And then s- spread throughout, not just one style in one area and one style in another, um, to create interest. And, and that's kind of what we're going for.
Yeah, the, the threshold we put in that particular, when that kind of standard would get triggered, is that a minimum of thirty? If, let's say you have a site and you have to apply at least two architectural styles, a minimum of thirty percent of, well, let me back up and say, the, the minimum application of a single architectural style would be thirty percent of the entire complex. And so what we're trying to get at there is that somebody doesn't have, you know, a twenty-nine unit development and they do twenty-eight Spanish revival buildings all using the same plan. And then they do one building as a different style and they say we met the standard, cause we have two styles. That's not the intent, obviously. So we said at least thirty percent of the development has to be of a unique architectural style. So you could have a thirty, seventy split percentage wise in that particular project. And, and this, we're thinking through too, in terms of the numbers that we're, we're applying this to. This criteria to use at least two styles is triggered when you're between fifteen and twenty-nine individual buildings, residential buildings. And so, you know, we kind of wanted to avoid the possibility that you have a really precise percentage and then you end up with a case where the percentage would apply to a fraction of a building and then everybody's scratching their head trying to figure out how to use that. So we wanted to build in some flexibility um into that criteria. But I think, you know, this is one of these cases where now that the document's out, it's probably worth doing another round of kind of trial ballooning this against projects you like, count the number of buildings, you know? Would this have to be more than one style, projects you don't like, would this capture it? We tried to do that with some of the projects, the staff had sort of thrown up to us to look at. And we think the numbers generally work with what's been approved by the city. Um, and been well received by the city, but you know, they're easy enough to change these numbers when they get to the final version.
Okay. There was some mention earlier about solar panels. Question I had on solar panels is, are, is that, can we require solar panels for every project?
So Commissioner Wojcik, they are required, uh, it, it, for basically every dwelling unit that's built in the state now, there's a solar requirement. And they have to plum for the EV charger now in the, in the garage as well.
That's for multifamily.
It's building code.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, so that's already required in the building code, it doesn't need to be in the, the design standards.
Okay. Can you go to the slide that had the checklist? I think it was one of the very last ones. I think what would help, be helpful is, um, in a couple of the bullet points, you, you mentioned what chapter it's coming from. It may be helpful to both staff and developers if you ask you for every bullet point, say what, where that's coming from, for ease of reference.
That's a good, uh, good suggestion, I think, once this kind of like the standards begin to solidify, then we can kind of cross-reference that.
And then, um, there was the review slide that had the review cycles. One, there's cycles, uh, I think one through three, four. And I guess if I go only through review cycle number one and it's approved, it's roughly uh twelve weeks, give or take.
Well, this, that's somewhat optimi- optimistic. I would, so this is currently what's in our process guide, this is the level three right now. Most projects, I would say, don't, it's just, it's really difficult for fo- for projects to go through just one cycle review, the way it processing with staff. I don't want to digress into too much of a discussion of processing of planning projects, but it's really difficult. Most projects do at least two reviews, if not a third sort of final wrap-up review. Um, especially if there's a SEQA document. Oftentimes when we do the first review, it's almost like, um, you don't really know quite exactly how the SEQA document's gonna go yet on the first review. And then you're really kind of getting into the SEQA document, if there is one, in the second review, in the current process. So that, I would say, that really does handicap a lot of applicants, um, and slows them down quite a bit. And you can see, you know, when there's no SEQA, it's, and there's just a ministerial review, that will change this part of the process a lot for folks. Um, cause that, that kind of ability that SEQA has to, always seems like it slows things down, especially the other, number of other things that come with SEQA, like AB fifty-two tribal consultation and, and, you know, talking to agencies who don't really have a timeline to get back to us. A lot of that goes away, you know, when we get to this ministerial review. So that the applicants will be really, a lot of developers that, you know, I've already talked to are excited about this part of it, the aspect of if they know they can get a, uh, a, a project exempt, you know, that this cuts down quite a bit on the, that waiting game they do that is triggered by SEQA, if you look at the, the process back here.
Yeah, so if I look at, um, the current pro- uh, process, if I have to go through two cycle reviews, it's roughly uh twenty-one weeks?
Yeah, and that just, that's just staff time, really. Um, the, there's, there's city review time, there's applicant response time. Sometimes the applicants don't get back to us in that timeframe, so then it extends out if the applicant's spending time. What if the applicant has to wait to do some kind of survey, like a burrowing owl survey or something, those things can take more time. And sometimes, you know, applicants ask for more time. This is based on, uh, when we prepared this process guide, which was, uh, it was quite a while ago, uh, I think before I was here. But th- th- this is based on our general process about probably six or seven years ago and the projects that we were in process at the time. Some of these timelines have gone up, uh, just to the myriad of things the state's done and the, and things they've added on. Um, especially with the SEQA process seems to take longer and longer now, to be honest.
Thank you. Um, no further questions, thank you for all that.
Thank you. Um, Vice Chair Fisher, questions for staff?
Yes, please. Can you reiterate for me how SB twenty-eleven is going to affect our city?
Sure, let's, um.
That's July first this year, right?
Yeah, so unfortunately, um, the state legislature decided to, to pass that last year. I guess one good thing was, um, I believe when I went to the governor, the governor told, uh, told that, said he would sign it if it was delayed six months. That was my understanding, so they delayed it, instead of it going into effect in January, it goes into effect in July. What it does is it opens up, uh, anywhere that you have commercial zoning in your city, anywhere in the state, uh, office zoning in the state. Or you allow office or, or commercial uses, all those zones, it opens it up to affordable housing. So one hundred percent affordable projects can be proposed on those sites. Um, and they are required to go through a ministerial process if they, if they, um, uh, submit a project to the city. So it cannot be discretionary, there's, it would not ever come to the commission. And so a big part of having these design guidelines in place is so that when those projects come in, staff has something to review those projects against. Without the, the design standards, we really don't have anything to hold those projects to. The state haphazardly put in the law that you review it against the nearest residential zone, which you can imagine that's going to be a fight with developers as to what the nearest residential zone is and what's the nearest style of development. So, yeah, a key advantage to us at this point and with that law coming into effect is to get these uh, design standards in place so we can regulate those types of projects.
We have outlined areas where we think housing should go. With this new law, that's really going to change things, is it not? Or it just gives the developer an ability to come into an area that we haven't designated as a housing area within the city.
That, that's right, Commissioner Fisher, yeah, I mean, it's opening up new areas that, um, the city really didn't think that we'd be planning for housing in, that's, that's correct.
So, okay, so if, if we have to have so many housing developments in a given year, based upon the state mandate that we have, then, and we outlined where we could have those developments, that's going to change things a little bit to where a developer could come in and say, well, the new law says I can go right in the middle of a commercial re- uh, development.
That's correct. If it's affordable, it has to be, there's, there's a lot of caveats in the law, but it has to, has to meet a number of, of requirements, but yeah, that's correct. And Alan was gonna add something.
Cause I, I think one of the other provisions of the law, there's two parallel laws actually that kind of do the, effectively the same thing and have slightly different criteria. But one of them ha- also has a requirement for prevailing wage. Um, so you can do it, but you also have to pay prevailing wage in your construction. And from what I understand from various, you know, webinars and kind of sessions I've extended with developers that are kind of looking at this pretty carefully. What I heard most recently is that the development community thinks that the only way that really pencils is if you're in really high density, high demand portions of the state, namely the coastal cities. So I heard, at the latest one I was at, they just said, we don't think the supply's in, in land areas, cause it just doesn't pencil to do this kind of development in a commercial zone and pay prevailing wage and do all the affordability. But that's not to say it's, it's not likely to happen because if a hundred percent affordable, affordable housing developer comes to the table, they're already getting state money that's already requiring them to do prevailing wage. They've already built that into their pro formas. So, you know, Carl and I are sort of chatting, I think, in an environment like Marietta, it's your affordable housing developers that might start looking at commercial land and saying, you know, we can pick up this commercial land to do an affordable, a hundred percent affordable housing project. We've already baked prevailing wage into our pro forma and we don't have to compete with the market rate developers who are trying to go for all the multifamily zone properties, that you've already zoned for multifamily where they don't have to do prevailing wage. So this could be really interesting, I think, to see how effective this law is in individual cities up and down the state. This, this may turn out to be like SB nine, the, the sort of so-called anti-single family zoning. You know, that basically said every single family zone could be split into four lots or something like that. And it turns out in Riverside County, where we've done some, um, standards, uh, for S, on SB nine with the Cog, like not a single city up and down Riverside County has had an SB nine application, it's been much ado about nothing. So, well, I think there will be impacts of this law, but it will take some time to play itself out. And as, I, you know, quite honestly, we were contracted to develop this plan before this law was passed. And, you know, when we first started talking to Carl about it, we're like, this law's not gonna get passed, it's too broad. And then next thing we know, it's like, well, I guess we'd better start planning for how we're gonna address this law.
Yeah, I mean, I can say, Commissioner Fisher, I'm, almost everybody I, I, that we follow, all the different agencies, the League of Cities, the Planning Association, that, that our professional organization as planners were all opposed to the law. I, I don't know really very many people other than housing advocates that were supporting it, um, but it did pass. And like Alan said, we think mostly afford, it's gonna be affordable developers that'll be looking at this because of the prevailing wage issue. But there are affordable developers who have, uh, who have already reached out to the city with interest, so.
Is there anything in our design standards that possibly, and I'm not saying that we would ever allow it, but there's a lot of talk and discussion right now in affordable housing, uh, for conversion of containers into housing units. And those are sometimes coming into the commercial areas of a city. Is that something in our design standards we need to think about for future? Or, you know, I don't know how far away that would be for a city for Marietta, but in the other cities close by, they're looking at the possibility of those conversion of those, uh, containers. And they're, they're developing a, a five hundred to eight hundred square foot facility out of a container.
The way we've written the design standards to- today, the draft, like you wouldn't be able to do that. They would have to come in with a different aesthetic and a different kind of construction technique. Because the design standards, even for the modern style, is not going to be permissive for a shipping container architecture.
Why was that, why would that not be? There are a couple that I've seen that have a modern look to them, that have taken, uh, three or four containers and made a very modern looking, uh, residential unit out of it.
The reason I say that is that the standards that we did write for modern, I don't think would be permissive towards that particular architecture. So the draft standards wouldn't permit that, but that being said, like if there was interest in, you know, the city and kind of making that a possibility, we could kind of revisit how we address that.
Would we just reject a developer who would come in with that idea of container?
Right, Commissioner Fisher, we'd go through the checklist and likely, you know, the, this is, um, you know, we'd be looking at it, the, the modern checklist and it's likely they wouldn't meet the, the checklist requirements and staff would reject it, correct?
Okay, all right. Can you refresh my memory on TOD zone? What does that stand for?
Sure, it's the, it's our Transit Oriented Development Zone, so the, the background, you know, for the newer commissioners as well. So it's this red area in the center of the city, um, basically, uh, what, south of Los Alamos, east of Jeffersons. You got a, a large part of our com- uh, commercial, existing commercial uses are in the TOD, like the Walmart and, um, I believe that, like the Best Buy. Um, and then you've got, um, where we, we have the old airfield, um, and, you know, sort of behind Rancho Springs, um, that kind of area long envisioned by the city for office, you can see the office color here, but we have not had an office building back up in there in, in a very long time that's been built. And now you are getting, uh, development that's in- interested in there. So the reason why the TOD came about, it was two, two housing cycles ago, we had a really high arena number, more, twice as much as we got this time. It was, I believe it was six thousand some units and we needed a place to put those units. Um, and, and staff and the commission and the council at the time decided to, to stick a lot of those units in the TOD here, cause we had to have a place to put those units. Unfortunately, with the state laws, we had a workshop with you, uh, the commission, uh, about the Housing Accountability Act and the Housing Crisis Act. But those state laws, once they were in effect in twenty eighteen, there was no way to downzone this area to take those units out. Those units are baked, they, they're gonna always be there. Um, so there's always going to be the ability for people to build, they have to build at, at least thirty dwelling units per acre in the TOD. So it's a pretty high density to meet, but we do have a number of projects in process in there right now.
And TOD stands for transit?
Transit Oriented Development.
Oriented Development.
It's an, it's an overlay that is in our development code. So you have underlying zoning, like the office here, commercial, other commercial, there's one. So you have underlying zoning, like the office here, commercial, other commercial, there's one residential site in there, and that's the one that's under construction right now. Um, that's down the street. Otherwise, they're all other underlying zones, but the overall uh overlying zone is is called the TOD. Um, it it encourages pedestrian-oriented development, um, where, you know, eventually it's gonna be a really densely built area. The idea is, you know, in the future, we're right here at the split of the freeway, we're gonna have other transportation options potentially in that area. And really high high development in that area. We've got a lot of offense, office, and we've got the the triangle there. So the idea is, this is kind of like the hub of where we'll have the most uh apartments, and so that was kind of why staff put it there. And there there really is no way to take those units away now.
While you're on this map, I can envision in the city of Marietta a seven-story structure. Can't even envision a six-story structure because of the beauty that our hills are, the surrounding it, that would cut it off. Where would those be on this map if 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 a developer came in? Where would they go and put a six or seven-story building?
Well, so the TOD, I believe the TOD has over a hundred-foot height limit in it. So the TOD could easily accommodate that within the the red outline here. The innovation zone here in the um yellow also allows a pretty high um height, I believe it's over a hundred feet. And this is the old Office Research Park Zone, which also allowed that high. And we, this is where we have, like I said, an eight-story hotel that the commission approved uh three years ago. That's that's right in here, um, not yet built, obviously, but but in the works. Um, and then we do have, um, if you, one of the tallest buildings in the city right now is along the the two fifteen here, that office building that's sort of behind the Ranch of Springs Center, I believe it's five stories. Um, it might be four. So, yeah, that one, you can get quite a quite a tall building in there. The hospital could redevelop at some point, similar to the other hospitals, and you could get quite a big building there as well. But um as far as residential goes, the tallest residential buildings potential would be in the TOD. Um, and and then going out from there, it's much, it's it's not as tall as as the five or six stories.
Uh, just a quick question on Placeworks, uh, who is developing the standards. Uh, in twenty twenty-two, the the city council brought you on board, and you started, I think, in June of twenty twenty-two. Is this a project-based contract, or is this contract ongoing?
This is a project-based contract, so we have a specific set of tasks. When we complete that, our contract is is fulfilled.
And the specific tasks are to develop this design standards for the city?
That's correct. The bulk of our fee and tasks is associated with producing the document that you're currently seeing and kind of the final versions of it, bringing it forward to city council through you, um, when it comes up for approval. There's some other tasks related to staff training and updating the the Development Services Manual.
And what does your vision tell you about the fact that this project will be completed?
Wh- when? Yeah, I've got the I've got the next steps, Commissioner Fisher here. That's a good segue here, although I, Chair Le Paglia might have some things to say. So, yeah, that's so the next steps, um, so we likely complete public review in mid-May. Um, so about a month out, we would finalize the the design standards. There'll be a development code amendment that would refer to, right, because this is not gonna be in the development code, this is kind of a standalone document, so there'll be a development code amendment that will refer to it and and tie them together. We will also have to do a CEQA document. We we'll be doing an exemption for this project. Um, and then we would come back to the commission. I'm I'm right now, I think that's probably in June. Um, and then we would go to the city council, and I'm I'm thinking that's probably in August. That's, we're kind of firming that up. And then after that, do implementation. So that's kind of the timeline. And I would just add, um, this is fully funded by a a grant from the state. So this doesn't cost the city anything.
No, I know.
So that's.
They're not doing this for free?
They they gave us the money, so. So, um, yeah, so, anyway.
All the photos that were shown on these different slides, are those Marietta-based, or did you just pick those out of different cities?
It's a mix. It's a mix.
It's a mix?
So we we tried, we did before we uh got started, we did do a photographic survey of some of the better multifamily projects in the city that the staff directed, has said these are good examples. Um, and so it's a mix of Marietta examples plus other examples throughout the state of California.
Very good. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, uh, Commissioner Wojcik, more questions?
Not a question, more more of a comment. If you can go back to the map that had the uh different zoning areas. It it was it was, so, you know, you look at all the green, which could potentially be developed for multifamily uh housing, right? And I I think that uh we shouldn't kid ourselves between staff and planning commission, this one, future ones, same thing with city council, I, we're gonna run in several conflicts where multifamily housing goes into one of these commercial zones, but the property next door is still commercial. And all of a sudden, you're gonna wanna, a guy's gonna come in, and they're gonna wanna put in a tire shop, run an air wrench guns all day. And you're gonna have residents from these places saying, I don't want that next to me. Well, it's zone commercial, so I think that's just gonna, it's gonna create problems in the future. And it'd be interesting how it's dealt with, but just kind of some food for thought that sometimes these laws have unintended consequences.
Yeah, and Commissioner Wojcik, I mean, that's exactly what the League of Cities and the Planning Association said on this law was, you're just, you're totally putting conflicting land uses right up against each other and creating issues for cities and counties across the state. And it was, I, like Alan said, it was, we kind of were joking about it when they were considering it, because we really thought it was so outlandish that they wouldn't do it, and then they did. So it's very disappointing as a professional to to see that law.
Well, and there's no basis to think that the laws that are passed out of Sacramento are adding up to anything coherent and well-thought-out, right?
We agree on that, yeah. Thank you. God, Commissioner Reuben?
Yeah, just two follow-up questions, one that Commissioner Wojcik had had um had brought up. Large project, two different design standards where they have to intermix thirty percent. Do you have, um, is there something in the code said, hey, you know, here's your seventy percent over here and your thirty percent over here? Or are they required to be intermixed to a certain percentage throughout the development?
The way we've written it, it's open-ended, so it'd be up to the developer to decide if they want to intermix or if they wanna have, you know, distinct neighborhoods that have distinct identities.
Does the city have any say in that? Because I I'm just wondering, you know, maybe the city might and the developer may not agree uh to that, and they would say, no, we'd rather have it intermixed. Or is there some type of maybe upper hand, if you will, that the city would have based upon what is the best interest of the city, not necessarily the the developer?
I would say, Commissioner Reuben, if that's if that's what the commission's interested in, that's something you could as part of this workshop, tell us that you want us to put an objective standard that it needs to be mixed somehow, rather than like Alan was saying, right now it's kind of flexible. So if if that was something the commission wanted us to look at, we could look at that. Um, we do, Alan and I and Molly talked about this, um, um, this idea of, you know, when you have some of these larger projects, they may wanna create sort of, and and to maybe what we talked about before, Commissioner Reuben, maybe an area that's more of a town home, maybe smaller units, a different style and and in a certain area, right? And then maybe up in in a different part of the development, it's a it's a bigger building, and it's a and it's another style, right? And so right now, there's the flexibility for them to do that. If we require them to intermix, it might make some of the projects more difficult um in some ways. And we do feel like we're getting a lot out of the object- objective standards anyway, so I I would just offer that.
I I would just say, just a thought of, you know, do we do that? And then I'd look to my peers, uh, do we uh do we say that we wanna do that? Or have the flexibility where maybe it's, you know, staff or whatever. I I don't know, there's there's pluses to both depending on, okay, you're gonna you're gonna do a set of apartments over here in one part of the development, and you're gonna do condos and townhomes over here that, because it's a multi-type of a development, and you want the condos to look different than the apartments. I don't know, pick your poison, you know, I don't know.
I think you have to have the flexibility.
Yeah, and I would I would say so too, but I would say it would be the flexibility of the city.
Yes.
As opposed to the developer saying, telling you what to do, as opposed to saying, no, 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 this is based upon what we think would be the best fit for our city.
We could put something, I would offer, I mean, and Alan and Molly might chime in, we could put something that they need to really design those separations as more distinct, like distinct areas. We could put something in the objective co- like to say, like, you really need to design these a certain way, maybe maybe look at a a way to do that. Um, right now, we're we're kind of, we just have flexibility in there, really.
I like the flexibility, but not necessarily them or us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I concur.
I we couldn't, I'm thinking in my head, like, what kind of language you could write that's like a trigger, that's as if your property is of a certain scale, and you wanna do this, now you have to apply these this additional standard of I can't think of that language, but, you know, we'll kind of wordsmith that a little bit.
Yeah, well, if the objective, so maybe a certain size property, and then um, we could look, yeah, we could, we could look at that.
Yeah, it strikes me that if a project is of a certain scale, you may wanna say it should be distinct neighborhoods as opposed to eighty buildings, and I just alternate every third building, you know, every three buil- every other building changes styles, and I met the standard, and it's a hodgepodge co- incoherent mess, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add one more comment to that. I mean, depending on the scale of the development, I mean, sometimes you'll see developers that will cluster products based on density type. And so if we have that uh uh requirement for intermixing types of styles, that that may not uh be a great land use plan that we wind up with, if we have to kind of intermix uh different, you know, density types. But I I think, you know, we'll we'll need to talk more with with Alan and Molly and and bring it back some options.
And then one last question was something that Commissioner Fisher brought up, the timeline. And of course, it pushes us past July first, you know, with twenty eleven. Is there, how is that? How do we, how do we deal with that conflict if we have somebody come in kind of between the the overlapping period?
So on a separate track, um, staff is working on an interim measure to take to city council um next month to address that. So, um, I don't have that in front of you, but yes, we are looking to have something that essentially would point staff to review projects with these draft guidelines and and design standards that we have. Uh, it's just they won't be adopted yet until we can get to where we can adopt them, which we're looking at August, so.
Got it. Thank you.
Um, landscape, uh, di- does your, does does, we haven't talked at all about landscape. Obviously, that's a big part of, you know, design element. Um, I feel like each different design has its own, you know, set of landscape guidelines. Is that a part of this, or is that its own?
Yeah, we have a whole section that deals with open space and landscape.
Okay, we don't necessarily need to review it. I was just wondering if.
Yeah, and and again, a lot of this points to the municipal code, which already has a lot of standards related to landscapes, so we're just reminding.
Okay.
As you read through this, oh, yeah, this municipal code addresses landscape.
Okay.
So we're trying not to duplicate what's already been said.
Um, in the in the, uh, I believe the the innovation community, or excuse me, commercial uh zoned areas, there was only two design elements. It was modern and.
Farmhouse.
Farmhouse. Um, you know, I I I know you guys are the professionals, but you said it'd be out of character to have um like the mission style for that s- size of a building. I don't know, I guess if, I don't, I'm not sure if I'd like to see that. I'm like, I'm trying to picture like a like a five-story mission-style building, which I I get, like, maybe wouldn't look very proper. But at the same time, I'm just trying to give ourselves any option to avoid, you know, having to do modern.
Yeah, I think this whole list, this kind of bucket of the modern farmhouse that applies to all this sort of commercial innovation zones, we'll revisit and rethink that with the direction we heard earlier.
Okay, well, maybe of the styles, you know, obviously Tuscan probably wouldn't fit that, and, you know, uh, um, some of the others, but maybe Mission would be one. I I feel like I can picture a few buildings in San Diego, like in downtown, that maybe are three or four or five stories that have a a mission kind of Adobe-style look still.
Mission, the mission style, the colo- Spanish colono arrival style is actually very robust and could get quite large. You can think of, you know, any number of buildings in downtown Santa Barbara that are upwards of six stories and almost a whole city block. And so they can be very large buildings and still be very attractive, employing that architectural aesthetic.
Okay.
So it may be the appropriate alternative to farmhouse or modern. Just because it does fit in in a lot of contexts and.
Yeah.
I personally, I think it's also um one of the more forgiving styles for bad architects.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, okay, well, could take that. Um, you know, and just something to highlight personally, in in all the photos that, you know, are the sample photos. Um, one thing that I think kills every design, it doesn't matter what it is, are power lines. And I say this half-jokingly, but it would be great to have the uh removal of of power lines in the surrounding area, or, you know, to put underground to aesthetically, you know, up the design of it. Um, we've we've dealt with that in the past, where, you know, we wanna bury power lines, and we can't because of whatever reason, but, you know, yeah, of course, I guess the cost of it, but it's a, I don't know, it's just something to note that in all these sample photos, there are definitely no ugly power lines. Um, anyways, that's all I've got. Anybody else? Anything?
Mr. Chairman, one more thing, I just, uh, with the comments that we received on uh the uh obtaining more public feedback, we'll we'll check back in with our uh public information officer uh and see if we can have a more uh proactive approach, maybe we're pushing out information as opposed to having residents go to the website, which is obviously a more passive approach. So uh we'll we'll definitely uh circle back with her and and see what more we can do.
I- i- if I could make a suggestion with that too, a lot of the social media, we have followers outside the city. So I think, I don't know how you differentiate in that, that you wanna get the people that live in the city versus a bunch of people that may follow the city that live elsewhere, that would that that would somehow chime in and and upend the the concerns of the residents. So I don't know if there's some way in the survey to say, hey, do you live in the city or not, or whatever.
Yeah, some of those social media platforms allow you to see where your followers are, so I'll, we'll check with her and and see what's the good approach for that.
Maybe even kick things off with some type of a direct mail campaign initially, just to get people's attention. You know, if you just look at the conversion rate, Twitter, Facebook, Instagram on followers, point two percent and the population, point oh four. So again, just an opportunity knocking for us to be, you know, how do we go from better to best?
All right. Anybody else? That was a fun workshop. I'd also wanna provide the public an opportunity to speak. I don't know if anybody from the public was here, wanted to speak to the commission on it.
Yeah, I see, I see that's next on my list here. Um, uh, yeah, do, Madam Secretary, do we have any public comments tonight?
Seeing none.
None, okay. Um, let's see, that, I guess that's it. City planner comments?
Uh, no comments. I think uh should have a couple items coming up in the next meeting in a couple weeks, working on a couple items. Um, but I really appreciate the commission's feedback tonight. Appreciate the working on the workshop with you all, and we'll bring this back when we uh when we're ready, hopefully soon, as as I heard, so.
Yeah, thank you. Well, thanks to staff, um, Alan, Molly, thank you, guys, and uh we look forward to seeing you again, and thanks to everybody. So everyone, have a good night. Uh, we will adjourn tonight's meeting at uh eight ten P M.